Welcome, everybody. First thing on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all. We've got a nice, easy agenda tonight. First item on the agenda is Holt Road. Come on up. How you doing?
It's like the chairman.
Anywhere you're comfortable, as long as it's near a microphone.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Kevin Foley. I'm a North Andover resident, 52 Hewitt Ave., North Andover. I also have a law practice in Newburyport, Massachusetts, and I'm representing MMD, the petitioner, MMD Shooting LLC, and Jen Thompson, and also Holt Road LLC, which is the owner of the property, 210 Holt Road, and Jeff Thompson, who's here with us this evening. And so I apologize, I was not here at the last meeting. I did watch the meeting on videotape. And I've been working with the town planner in a telephone conversation I had with the planner yesterday, late yesterday afternoon, and again earlier this morning. We discussed some of the petition, the plans, and the submissions, including the narrative. And there were some things in there that needed to be added to, that were for clarification purposes. And there were some other items that really needed to be recalculated and clarified because of some discrepancies between what was needed, for example, for parking spaces. So as a result of that, I had a conference call today with the engineer, who I think you met last time at your last meeting. And he's agreed to prepare a supplemental narrative to clarify some of those issues and also revise plans that'll be resubmitted to the board. So we have a clear picture of exactly what it is that we're looking for and what the project will consist of. At the same time, we've also contacted the architect, because he submitted plans, revised plans from him. We expect to have all of that by Monday. And of course, that all happened today. And so I wrote an email to the town planner about 3:00 this afternoon and suggested that we would have all that and that tonight. I didn't expect that we would probably close the public hearing tonight, because you'd probably want to see those, that supplemental narrative and the new plans. And also to discuss further some of the issues that were discussed at the last meeting. And I'm aware of the fact that the town has reached out to the chief of police. I know I've had a conversation with the chief, as well as a conversation with the sheriff from Essex County, that I'd be representing the petitioner before the ZBA and also before the planning board. And I don't mind telling you that the reaction was quite positive from both those individuals, knowing, for example, with the kind of training for law enforcement that's needed. A facility like this, a state-of-the-art facility like this would be welcome, because not only can you shoot live rounds at paper, but you also have the ability to shoot an airgun in different situations in a virtual. Because, you know, of the day and age that we live in, law enforcement is required to deal with a whole host of situations. So that training component. So the sheriff's department just put a group through the academy for the new corrections officers through the Northern Essex Community College. And I don't know if the board knows it, but you know where they had to send them? For the firearms piece of that, out to Fort Devens? And so I know that they would welcome having something here in Essex County, particularly in North Andover, particularly in an industrial zone, with access, with parking, and not far from the North Andover Police Station and that sort of thing. So that's been my conversation. I know that the town has reached out to the chief to get some sort of reaction from him. I believe this has been passed through over to the Board of Health for some sort of a comment or conservation, if there's any jurisdiction by them. I know the building inspector will weigh in on the technical piece with regard to parking and that sort of thing, to make sure that those calculations were done, so that we're all on the same page. And of course, we'll look for any guidance that the ZBA has or the planning board has from us. I was present with the planning board meeting last week. I think we're meeting again next week? So that's continuing to next week, and we're providing them with the additional information I alluded to at the beginning of my comments. And so since the last time you met here with the petitioner, with their civil engineer, with Mr. Thompson, I think a number of things have been provided to the board, including some information about the indoor range design. And of course, no one's been selected to do the design by Meggitt Industries. And that's a lengthy publication. They're a national outfit that does it for the federal government. So that runs the gamut from floor to ceiling in this sort of facility, which would be a state-of-the-art facility in terms of lighting, in terms of air quality, in terms of containment of both lead and dispersed lead and protections and safety and all that stuff. And there's a whole gamut of things that Meggitt talks about. They haven't decided that they're going to go with Meggitt yet. There's also been a draft standard operating procedure. And I believe that has also been sent to the chief, if I'm not mistaken. Jeff, do you know?
Not that he might make a specific comment about that, but I think that's been submitted to this board and also to the planning board. That's something that was produced by MMD. On how they would operate, I know a lot of questions came up at the last meeting. How is it going to be operated, particularly if you're asking for a 24/7, that sort of thing? You know, what kind of staffing are you going to have? What kind of security are you going to have? And so that document is a work in progress. But I believe you have, since the last time you met, you've all received a copy of a draft standard operating procedures for MMD. And also, I believe we've passed along some construction information from a group called, is it Carriage, Jeff? That talks about containment, the various types of containment for...
No.
Would have been what?
Meggitt. No, it's a Meggitt package.
There was another email, Monica, I believe.
These are the three that was submitted.
I apologize. Okay, well, we do have something else here on the containment, because I know that was discussed the last time, so I'll make sure I get that over to you as well. From a group that's, there are three different groups that do that sort of thing. We can put, and I think Jeff alluded to in his remarks last time, about, you know, the different barriers. They'd have either, you know, the filled concrete, the solid concrete, the steel-plated armor, the rubberized blocks. So there are different manufacturers that do that sort of thing. And of course, everything is going to be indoor. So what we're really talking about is a 12 bays for live shooting on the first level. And then on the second level would be 12 bays for the airgun shooting, accompanied by, which are smaller, smaller areas. And then two virtual training rooms for educational purposes, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Airgun shooting?
Yes.
Are you talking like BB guns, pellet guns?
I think it's a plastic bullet, right, Jeff?
No, they are. They are steel projectile. A lot of the gun manufacturers...
It's odd, BB guns or pellet guns.
If you could come up to the microphone and introduce yourself kindly.
Yep, Jeff Hornson, 44th.
It's something more advanced than a BB gun?
Yeah, it's a little bit more advanced than that. You'll see a lot of...
Just curious. I mean, when you say air, I think I have a BB gun, a pellet gun.
It's...
If you're in my childhood youth there.
Similar, but a lot of the gun manufacturers will make a version of a regular handgun. They'll make that exact gun in a pellet gun, so that you can practice drawing from...
So what is a pellet gun?
So it is a pellet gun. It does shoot steel pellets.
Does it have that CO2 cartridge too?
Some have CO2, some compressed air. But it is more for training. If you do a lot of shooting, it can get very expensive to practice, where you can use your same, the gun has the same weight, same characteristics as your normal carry gun, but you can go practice. And really, the only thing you're expending is small steel pellets.
The air method than it is the actual gunpowder.
Yes, oh, considerably. Considerably low velocity, but you can practice scenarios.
I'm just curious.
Yep.
It is much less expensive than shooting live rounds. I used to shoot many years ago with my father-in-law down at the place in Malden that you talked about last time, with one of his friends. And it's an expensive proposition if you do that recreational. If you're shooting .38s, that's one thing. But if you're shooting a Magnum caliber bullet, a .44 or a .357, that ammunition is very, it was very expensive 20 years ago. I can't imagine what it is today. But the air pellets at least give the same sort of an effect of shooting, but it's less expensive.
And the accuracy is the same?
Well, you're not going to be shooting the same distance.
It's a shorter distance, a much shorter distance.
But you'll get the very similar characteristics.
Got it. Thanks.
And so with all of that, I mean, I didn't realize until late this afternoon, after I had sent the planner an email around 3:00, that we were the only ones on your agenda. And so around 5:00, I think I got an invitation to request a continuance. So I, as a result of a telephone call, I said that I'd be willing to do that, because I didn't want to just bring you all down here just to request a continuance. And I thought you'd probably want to see the other information as well before we went much further. But then I heard that you wanted someone to come down here live and request the continuance. So I am requesting a continuance until the next meeting. But we're here now, if you wanted to ask us any other questions about the application.
So a number of questions at the last meeting were about after-hours and how the facility would be operating in those times. And you alluded to it a little bit earlier, but has there been a decision made as to how that will be operated?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
So will you be open 24 hours?
I think, I believe that's the proposal.
We'd like to. We'd like to be open 24 hours.
Okay.
So I've got a couple of questions. And what was on my mind primarily after, when this was introduced, was I'm impressed with, call it all of the physical things. I mean, it looks like, and all of the documents are very sound. My questions are more about the personnel and the customers. And I think about it from that perspective. And so let me, my first question is, this range safety officer, this individual or individuals, and then also the, this NRH range safety officer training. So I'm just, are these people that, I'm going to say are certified, that you then hire? Or are these people that are like you, like me, that then get trained? And so tell me about how you're going to be staffing the business, please.
There are, there are a number of people in Massachusetts that are so-called gun experts. That is, they're certified to provide...
And are a range safety officers?
And provide training.
But there are the ability to go out to NRA certified. SIGAMS is up in, up in New Hampshire, can provide even more advanced training than you would normally get locally for.
How do you anticipate, if you were going to move forward tomorrow, how will you be recruiting your personnel?
There could be some that are retired military, retired police. Those are definitely the type of people that we would expect that have license to carry.
So you will run an ad and see who would respond to that, something in that nature?
That's a possibility, yes.
Okay.
I believe there is an active association of those that are experts in this area, including retired military, retired NRA, retired law enforcement officers. I know in my practice, I've had to hire so-called gun experts for any number of reasons in court proceedings, or to opine on various things. So, but they're versed in training and safety procedures.
The document, and I know this is just a prototype, but there is, when it comes to minimum age to shoot, or where individuals of age of X who possess a handgun, et cetera. I mean, so when will that information be completed?
I'm sure that's some information that we could really dig down to and give specificity. And that's one of the reasons why we talk about in airgun, the ability to shoot airgun. Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, there are merit badges for shooting. And it's not just air. There, I think in the Boy Scouts, it's a .22 only. It can only be a single-shot rifle, you know, it can't have a magazine to it. So there are merit badges for those types of groups. There's the ROTC groups in high schools and colleges that, I mean, there used to be, a lot of schools used to have rifle teams back in the day. Not so much anymore around here. But there are lots of groups that could take advantage of airgun. And once qualified, could go and learn to shoot a .22. I mean, we certainly wouldn't have young people without parental supervision at all. They would always have to be accompanied by a parent, if they wanted to learn to shoot and handle a gun properly. But we would never have unaccompanied, you know, you've got to be a certain age to have a handgun anyways. Nor would you be able to come to the facility and rent a gun at a young age. You'd still have to be an adult.
Is there any state regulation about an age limit?
I've seen some facilities that, you know, have okay eight-year-olds to be accompanied by a parent and go shoot. But I mean, they're probably shooting .22s.
But there's not an official state regulation on an age limit?
Not that I've ever seen.
Not like a drinking age or that sort of thing?
No. No, not that I've seen. I've seen various ages at different facilities.
So here's my issue. We had asked you, I mean, you came and you presented the board with the application. And we had asked you for specific things, and you present us with generic. So for me, because you're asking for basically a use special permit, you have to have this in place. I mean, I don't want to have a facility go in there and say, "Well, you know, when we get there, we're going to change it." So for me, you should have a little more of a specific, I mean, we might go with them or we might not. This might be to, what we're going to use our, might not. Our parking might change, but it might not. So for me, when you have an application that's not a precise, not a thought-out application, it makes me wary. So especially on a shooting range, and something that we've never actually have done in this town. So I get a little wary on the application as a whole, when you're not providing me with specific details of your application. I don't know the age. Maybe I can find out. So I need concrete, specific answers to your application to sway me to vote on this. So I'm having a hard time with this whole thing right now, to be honest with you.
We're not trying to be evasive. The reason for providing that information is to show you what's out there.
I suspect that... Because we asked for it as well.
Well, I suspect that the board is going to condition the petitioner as to what the conditions are that would be allowed for the use up there. So if there are specific things that you require us to provide prior to voting, I'd like to know what those things are, because I haven't heard any specific thing tonight or when I watched the video this afternoon. This is the first time I heard about the age question tonight.
Because we didn't have anything here. We didn't have an SOP. We had nothing. We literally had nothing. That didn't show anything.
Well, I know, if you may remember, Ellen, my introductory comments were that, I don't know if you even had a chance to digest the information that we provided since they were here the last time. That was an attempt to provide some information to the board about lighting and ventilation and safety and operations. That MMD SOP is something that was drafted by the applicant to give you an idea of what's in there. Is there something else that you require to be put in there? Because we can be bound by that, but I don't know specifically what questions weren't asked that were, that weren't answered, that were asked the last time, and...
I might help illuminate some of that. There were five, five things throughout the hearing that were discussed and that I believe that were jotted down. And then there were five things that were summarized at the end of the meeting to suggest to the applicant that that is their homework. So it's terrific to have you on the team. It's terrific to have you before the board. You said you watched the video.
I did.
Those five things were a letter from the police department. I don't see a letter.
Well, that's in the works. I mentioned that in my introductory remarks, Mr. Chairman.
I don't see a letter. And when was that going to be in the works? We didn't get any, we didn't, Merrill, Merrill...
We can't...
May I have a turn, please? May I have a turn, please?
It's your meeting, Mr. Chairman. I'm just trying to answer the question.
Well, thank you for that acknowledgement. So with that in mind, let's not interrupt one another. I did not interrupt you. It is my expectation that you will not interrupt me. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Good. It wasn't until this afternoon that Merrill, because she was working on the file, discovered that this applicant suddenly needed a continuance. Then there's an email that says, "Please confirm that we can have this continuance." I'm not sure she fielded a telephone call, telephone call about this. But I will suggest to you, Attorney Foley, that's not the way that this board is going to do business at the very last second, saying, "No, let's have a continuance. I haven't done my homework." There were five bits of homework that were assigned to this applicant a month ago. I see, as Ellen points out, well, this is, we might not be going with them, squishy. These are the SOPs the applicant drafted, squishy. We might not be using them. Help us advance the file. Hopefully, we have your attention. We didn't have your attention a month ago, had your attention kinda this afternoon when you said that you watched the video. And it feels like we don't have your attention tonight, because there were five things, and I've seen zero of them delivered. I'm going to need help getting over the goal line, just like Ms. McIntyre, because this applicant is not performing, as far as I can tell. Now, there may be a whole lot happening behind the scenes. There may have been a million things going on in the last month in order to prepare for tonight's meeting. I see zero evidence of that. So kudos to the efforts that may have been made over the last month, but a big fat F for what the deliverables were. If you want conditions, if you want to hear about conditions, the conditions are going to be, you've got to follow these SOPs, and you've got to follow this design, which we still haven't necessarily seen. So I'm going to ask the applicant to be a little bit more forthcoming, a little bit more creative, perhaps a little bit more proactive, and give me something that you do not want me to over-condition. Can I expect that in a month? And is a month long enough? Because if we're going to run into another fire drill at 3:30 or 5:00 in the afternoon in a month, that's not something that I'm going to abide by. So can, is three weeks, I think it's, they need three weeks, deliver it to Merrill so that she can get the materials out to us, so that we can actually have an opportunity to take a look at them before the hearing, rather than just say to the applicant, "Walk me through it," which is what I would have to do tonight. And it's a good thing I didn't read all this, because what I'm hearing tonight is, it's squishy. So it's a good thing I didn't try to understand this, because it's changing. I'm going to need the applicant to put forth an application, particularly when it's a use. And a use that I confessed on my part, and I saw some nodding heads from other board members, that this is a topic that I am ignorant of. I am relying on the applicant to hold my hand through an ultra-hazardous activity like this, so that I can go home to my wife and say, "Yeah, honey, it is fine. This is perfectly situated on Holt Road. This is a dream location for the use." It still needs some management. I'm sure the planning department is doing its part. I'm sure you're collaborating with the planning department hand in hand. I would like for this board to not be an afterthought, if we can achieve that as well.
Well, I apologize if you think that I think that you're an afterthought. I wouldn't be here tonight if I felt that way.
It would be dismissed. If you were not here tonight, this application would not be going forward.
To try...
So that's a self-preservation move.
Okay. To try to answer your first question, with regard to the number-one thing out of the five, and I want to hear what the other four are, with regard to the letter from the chief, I don't think that we can promise that the chief is going to give you a letter from us, on behalf of us. But I am aware that the town has reached out to the chief to have the chief weigh in on the petition and the application. So that's where I think that stands. What are the other four, Mr. Chairman?
There were, my notes indicate that the second was that we wanted to hear the construction of the walls. Because once again, by and large, I am ignorant of this topic entirely. And so therefore, I want the application to convince me that whatever the construction is, is going to be stopping projectiles from heading out into the public.
Okay.
The third thing that I wrote down, I'm going to rely on the other board members to shade my memory if it's incorrect, or correct my memory if it's inaccurate, is that we're also talking about the interior noise escaping outdoors. And we heard from some other folks at the hearing, I'm sure you listened to the hearing or watched the hearing, so you know, there are others that said, "You might not even know that it's there. It could be as quiet as a library outdoors." I'm going to want to hear that from this application.
Can I ask the board a question with regard to that one, with regard to the noise? Because it's an industrial zone, it's an indoor facility, and suffice it to say that we're going to meet or exceed the, allow decibels for the industrial zone under the bylaw. Is that enough to satisfy you with regard to number three?
It may not be at this point, but that will be...
What else do you need? What else would you need to satisfy you with regard to number three, Mr. Chairman?
I believe there's a large apartment complex that has been going up that is not too far, and I think that is the primary concern, is, is that will that be in, something that affects folks in a residential range that's not too far away? Even if it meets the decibel requirement, the, it is not, this is also not, there's a reason there's a special permitted, permit required for the use, and one of those is that gunfire can be particularly disruptive, even if it meets the requirement for, say, machinery would be allowed to, how loud, machinery would be allowed to be in that space. And so I think that's part of the concern.
I'm not, I'm not sure how to address that, then. If it, if it meets or exceeds the allowable decibels for the industrial zone, I'm not sure, you know, if you want a specific decibel level that'll be allowed in, in the facility, or...
I mean, I...
I'm just trying to understand.
Is there a way to model, and I feel like there should be a reasonable way to model, whether or not someone sitting on a porch on that new apartment complex will hear gunshots?
Hear loud gunshots or hear gunshots?
Hear gunshots.
There are acoustic engineers that worked with a lot of them in the past, and there's a lot of different ways of measuring sound. There's, there's different types of sound that transmit differently. So you may ask an acoustic engineer to do a study, and it's based on your wall construction and the type of sound that's being done. So you may look for that kind of consulting to give you a report on the, the impact of the sound.
Now, these are just suggestions. It's, it's your, as an applicant, you're to present this to us. So by him suggesting that doesn't mean that you have to go out to do that. These are just suggestions to you as an applicant from the board. How you present it to us is up to you. So I don't want the board to be held liable to say, "Well, you told us to get an acoustic engineer to find," but it's up to you to present it to us.
Figure out a way to make a case to us that people aren't gonna be sitting on their porch listening to gunshots all day. That's, I think that's really what it comes down to.
And again, this is another one of my, my issues. If you're in the business, you should know this. You should know how to get this, where to get this, when to get this, and present it to us properly, not having us as a board who don't know anything about this suggest things to you on how to have it. The applicant is in the business, should know where to get this, if you're gonna build this facility.
Go get information about sound suppression on a gun range?
Correct. Yep. It's your, it's your responsibility. It's, it's, it's up to you as an applicant.
But hearing something from the range, a pop...
We'd like to know the sound, the level, and what does it sound like? You should, you should know, again, the applicant should know this, not us. So you know what we want as, as number, number three, the sound.
If your answer is that people will hear something, and here's what it will sound like, that isn't accept, that, that at least gives us the information we need to answer that question.
We can't tell you how to get it, where to get it.
No, no, no. Sitting here tonight, I don't know that people will hear anything. I mean, they'll, it's likely, given the location of the proposed facility, that they're gonna hear a, a truck backfire more than they're gonna hear a gunshot from a range.
But that's up to you to present to us.
Right. For a range that's only gonna have 12 live bays at any given time...
That, that may very well be true, but...
Or a, or a truck unloading, quite frankly.
But I would like at least an argument drawn out for it.
A truck's not gonna load at, at night, because if you want, if you want an hour of operation 24/7, there's gonna be no trucks going back in there at that time. So you might hear it. Your level of noise might be different at that time, as opposed to...
Or a plane landing at Lawrence Municipal Airport, which can land at any time, I suppose.
Well, it, it's not only the fact that there's a noise disturbance, it is that gunshot specifically, the sound of a gunshot specifically, will be more disturbing to people than some other noises, even if it is quieter. So I, I, I understand that there's this relative thing, that it's not going to be the loudest thing in the area, probably, but, again, like, if you're gonna, I would like to see something with at least some kind of explanation as to what you think will be, what it will be, and then from there, we can at least make a judgment. But right now, we can't make a judgment, because we're all waving our hands, talking about what it might be like.
Well, currently, there, there isn't a residence within a half a mile of the location of the proposed facility.
How far is the, the new apartment complex?
Rather than debate that, we'll, we'll just, if we get, if we get to a decision and if we get to an approval, then I will be happy to draft the conditions.
What's number four, Mr. Chairman?
That there, the, the security and safety plan. There was lengthy conversation about the, about the access and how people are gonna get in and how it's going to be staffed. I'm not expecting an answer. I would, I would have hoped for an answer in three weeks, but I guess that's not a topic that's going to be broached tonight, or at least not, it's broached, but not solved. And the last thing was, since we are, I'm gonna speak for myself, since I'm largely ignorant of the topic, there's some interest in understanding what the regulatory regime is that the, that the facility's going to be operating under. And with that, I would leave it to the other board members. Was, was there anything that I misstated or missed?
I, I, I wrote down a couple of things as well. I had, if you had any issues or any correspondence with the airport, if you had reached out to Lawrence Airport to see if there's any issues, because one of the...
They were notified.
Okay.
They received a notice of public hearing.
But, so that's your, that's your...
I, I didn't know that. Did you talk to anybody over at the airport?
No.
Okay. You did? Okay.
That was a great, big concern, 'cause of the airport being right there. So before they even got any further, I talked to the manager of the airport. He had no problem with it at all.
So, 'cause you have to understand what this is, there's a private entrance, not that I'm, that I take a private jet or anything, but my private jet is parked, that there's a private entrance to the airport is right back there, is one of the entrances to the airport.
Yeah.
So, not that I know of. And I actually had another question about the recreation area, a little, how you're gonna manage it? I mean, I know one of the retail recreation areas, it just where it's situated, there was a, I, I know I wrote it down, and I'm thinking the only reason why I wrote it down, because there, it was unclear on how it was gonna be managed and the operations of that. I mean, is that gonna be open 24/7 as well? You know, the retail area, just how you're gonna manage the whole thing? And another big question, again, was the hours of operation, which you would like at 24/7, but that's not what you're asked, you know?
Well, given the level of detail that the board is asking for, maybe we should put this out till the March meeting, 'cause I don't wanna show up here and, and draw the air of the chairman, that we don't have the deliverables in three weeks, since it appears as though that's what's occurred this evening, and I don't wanna see that happen again.
Yeah, certainly the applicant's decision to make.
Please do.
Just, just, announce yourself, just for the record, and for the, all the folks at home.
I'm the building commissioner, and also the ZBA zoning enforcement officer. Planning is not ZBA. You can't go through planning to go to ZBA. That's kinda what happened today. We are two separate entities altogether. We don't follow them, they don't follow us, so getting secondhand information from planning is not gonna work on this, so we gotta be careful on that side.
Okay.
We are zoning, we, you talk to us, you talk to the board, you can't go through, you can't go through the planning board to try to get answers. It's not fair to them, it's not fair to us. So we need to go directly to the zoning.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much. Any additional thoughts?
Just one more, and it, it probably goes under security and access, but something that we talked about at the last meeting, and I presented it, and I'm gonna reiterate it, because I'm not a shooter, this is all new to me, I was trying to understand the clientele, and as I read the documents that I was provided, I can see where there are members. So I, so I, there are people who are gonna have a card that go through the, and then there are those that are gonna shoot what are called paid customers. What I don't know is who gets access there and who doesn't get access there, and I, I ask because I'm, I'm naive, and I worry about those kinds of things, in that how do you weed out someone who shouldn't be there? And so that's what I wanna add to the, the questions that have been laid out there.
I can give you an example. Granite State up in Hudson, New Hampshire, indoor shooting rain, range. When you show up, and New Hampshire doesn't even require a license to carry, you can show up there with guns, they, and you're allowed to shoot. If you're going up there, they have rules, if you're just a single person, you cannot shoot their rental guns or their trial guns. You have to have two people. They just don't allow single people, one person, to come in and, and shoot their internal guns. You wanna bring your own, that's fine. Massachusetts obviously would be different, that the only person that can possess a handgun is somebody that has a license to carry. So we would have similar, that when you check in at their, at that facility, you gotta go through, you're answering questions, it's a waiver.
So can you elaborate, I mean, so when we get together again, what you're articulating, can that be incorporated so that we can see tangibly, this is, this is what I can tell, when someone asks me about the shooting range, this is how I, this is how I can respond, what I, this is how people are gonna be qualified?
I think I could give you the, the two steps, the, the version with somebody that shows up with a license to carry, and then version two, somebody that doesn't have a license to carry, that just wants to come in and shoot. Yeah, I could give you a step-by-step what would happen.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I think for me as well, I, I'd like to know why you wanted to have it 24/7? What, what's the purpose of having a facility 24/7, with members and non-members, and, I mean, having that whole process of, can anyone come in at 1 o'clock in the morning, or do you have to be a member, or, I think we discussed this last time as well?
Yeah, we certainly, we certainly did a little bit, only because I, I was a member down in Mystic Valley for a long time. That, it's always been a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week club that I belong to, and it's because not everybody works Monday through Friday, normal, normal hours. There's lots of second shift, third shift people that can be involved in law enforcement as well, that have license to carry and may wanna shoot. Would never have, I, I would not suggest that we were looking for general public to be able to show up there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It would be people that have license to carry, that have gone through becoming members, that could come in, that we'd look to allow them in 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so whenever they wanted to shoot, to shoot.
So I, I think for me, and as well, as you're talking with the members versus non-members, being the 24/7, just lay it out for us?
Spell it out.
So we know, yes.
Absolutely.
So I know why that, okay, so if someone's there at 1 o'clock, they're a member and they're coming in, and I have faith that they're gonna shoot properly and, or whatever you people do, like, whatever happens out in, in the range, the gun range.
To an earlier comment, you know, where you were talking about, like, what kind of stipulations we would make, likely it's going to be, I, I think Paul indicated, like, you will hand us a sheet, we will approve that sheet, and we will say, "This is the stipulation." So to some extent, like, having this as a guide to, for us to understand it, is fine, except that we wanna be able to say, "This is the stipulation." And if you guys haven't chosen these people, that's actually really dangerous for you. Like, you, you, you don't wanna, you, you will wanna hand us something that you wouldn't freak out if we, if we stipulated that as part of it. So I think, think carefully about those materials that you hand us.
Regarding the 24-hour operation, in the standard operating procedures you talked about, there's a lot of talk about the range officer, but would there not be, would there be a range officer present during, after hours?
Yeah, wouldn't expect a range officer to be there 24 hours a day for somebody that is in, there's a member of law enforcement that has a license to carry.
But, but, but members aren't necessarily law enforcement, right?
Not necessarily law enforcement, but they do license to carry. Range officers, a range officer's main duty is really there to instruct and to make sure that, that people are shooting wisely, safely. When you're dealing with people that don't have license to carry, I would say that range safety officer is much more important than it is when it's somebody that has gone through, has been trained, has a license to carry, and obviously has a lot more respect, or should have a lot more respect for a handgun than somebody that, you know, all they've ever seen is that in the movies, and they decided they wanted to go learn how to shoot.
Unrelated, is your website active?
No.
Okay, 'cause I linked onto it, and I tried to access it.
No, no.
So this URL, mmmdshooting.com?
No, it's not active yet.
Okay.
Anything else from the board for the evening?
Do we have a public comment?
There's a gentleman that's been sitting in the back here.
I'm just observing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So unless there's anything else from you, certainly move this along to continue, make a motion to continue this. Do you wanna go all the way to, to March?
I think so.
When, when is March? March 10th? March 10th, then? All right? If, if, if there's, if there's nothing else, then, Steve?
The other thing is, is we, little did I know, okay, so one of the things that's not been referenced, as we talk about building, about the shooting range in North Andover, is that there is a range in Andover, indoor and outdoor.
Yeah, it's a sports club.
So I was just, I mean, it was like, as we talk about all, everyone going to, to these distance places, is, I mean, I'm just an observation, like, wow, why are people doing that if there's one over in Andover? So...
I think it's actually in North Andover, isn't it?
Yeah, it's in North Andover, but it's called the Andover, but it's a private club. You have to be sponsored to get in there, you can't walk in off the public. They don't rent it out, they don't do anything else. You have to be a member, and in order to be a member, you have to be sponsored by a member that's already in there. It is a club, it's not an open range like he would be, that it is gonna be open to the public. They don't have airsoft, they don't have anything like that. North Andover did qual, used to qualify over there on their outdoor range. It's very loud, but they do have an outside range. They have an indoor range, and it is open 24 hours. You go in with a card, you swipe the card, you go in at midnight, you go in at 1 o'clock in the morning, you're in there by yourself, or you're in there with another guy, and that's how they run there. But it's a private club, it's not open to the public, so...
Jennifer requested into the state licensing bureau for the number of people in some surrounding communities that have license to carry. I'm sure Kevin could provide you that information, but it's, these surrounding communities, it's, it's up around 15,000 people surrounding North Andover that have license to carry.
I don't know a lot about this, it's gonna sound it. License to carry, is that what you need to, like, carry, to have it on you, or just to have any gun?
To, well, handgun, but to carry it. That's your license to carry, which allows you to, to buy handgun. If you don't have that, you can't buy it, can't possess it.
So that's not, that's not the same as concealed weapon?
Yes, it is. It is the same.
So anyone with a handgun has a license to carry?
They should.
In Massachusetts?
If they have the handgun, they should have a license to carry.
Legally, legally, okay.
There are very strict criminal penalties for carrying without a license to carry.
I think it's a minimum 18 months in the House of Corrections, that's a, that they can't be waived by a judge, first offense. And if someone, also, I, I heard, I heard comments the last time about maybe someone coming out of a, a bar or something like that and decided to go shooting, that's the last thing someone with a license to carry wants to do, 'cause they know that you could be criminally prosecuted for carrying a firearm while intoxicated, it's like an OUI charge, and that would preclude them ever from getting a license to carry again, because if you have any, if you know the standard...
Yeah, yeah.
By the chief of police, if you got into a...
It might be the last thing they want, they wanna do, but you do hear of it happening, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, they, they're very strict about issuing license to carry, particularly in North Andover, but in, in most of the communities, that they can revoke that license to carry and be upheld in court for, for very minor things, including getting into a, a loud argument with somebody, might be enough to revoke it and be upheld under the, under the case law in Massachusetts. But if you're ever arrested for carrying a firearm while you're intoxicated, you might as well forget it. You're, you're never gonna get your license to carry reinstated anywhere, once you have that conviction. You're, you're never gonna get your license to carry reinstated anywhere, once you have that conviction.
Actually, before you continue, what, what were you doing with the parking? You needed to reconfigure the parking?
Uh, there, it was inconsistent with what was in the narrative and what was in the table. And what we wanted to do was flush out for the, for the parking situation exactly how we derived at the required amount of spaces for the use with the existing facility and the proposed use. And then a, a reduction based on a special permit. So, and of course, those numbers would actually be checked over by the building inspector. But we wanna make sure that that can be shown on the plan, how it was calculated, and, and the basis for, for the request for the reduction.
Do you need a variance on that, or do you meet the requirements?
Special permit.
For the parking, so you're gonna need a-
It's already been noticed, yeah.
The only one that could give a reduction in parking. Problem is that we have two different numbers. We had a number of 42, and they showed 43 spots. So, they meet it with that. Then on the narrative, they have 53 spots.
56, yeah.
56 spots, and that doesn't meet it.
There's some typos in the narrative, so we need to clean that up. And then the architect, I don't know what the architect was thinking when he put some, how, how the place is gonna be populated. So, that was inconsistent as well. So, to answer your question, there were some inconsistencies with the numbers that we had submitted for the parking. So, we wanna make sure we clarify that.
So, you're gonna present new, um, a new plan?
A supplemental narrative and a new plans. That's gonna happen by Monday. But the, the rest of the homework, as you say, I think is gonna take us a little bit longer. But well in advance of the March meeting.
Then is there a motion?
Uh, so moved. I'll make a motion to continue to March 10th.
Motion made. Is there a second? I think he just beat ya. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? All right, we are continued to March 10th.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
The only other item on the agenda, we don't, we don't get to escape it. We have to do board elections. I think I would move that we nominate Alexandria for all three positions.
I'll second that. I'll make a, I'll, I'll make a discussion not to keep the members of the board as is this year and look to mix it up next year. So, with Paul as chair, myself as vice, and Alan as clerk.
He did not leave in order to escape the, the election, by the way. And he is headed to Florida, so we could really stick him.
We're gonna, we're gonna discuss it, or do you want a second? Because I'll second that.
Uh, it was discussion, if you'd like to turn it into a motion, then I'll turn it into a motion as well.
Are you asking me, do I want you to, not without, not without an opportunity for discussion anyway? If, if there are any thoughts on that?
I'm very comfortable with it.
What's, it's good. My comfort level is, I just want everybody to be angling for taking over some of the, some of the roles here so that everybody gets trained up into this kind of stuff.
Well, as people in the room are associate members, so.
I know, that's, I know, there's gonna be another conversation about that. The conversation very well may be a shuffling of the full and associate members and/or we make a, make a rule change in order to open that up. But that, that may be a conversation for another day when we have a more complete board.
That's a great idea.
Uh, we can organize, we can organize ourselves in any way we see fit, as long as it is not contrary to the, the promulgated rules. I haven't, the, the promulgated rules are kind of a mess, and they're 30 years old, and they're not on an edible form. So, I've been slowly trying to create an edible form so that we can at least approach touching them, rather than just leaving them in a rock-solid PDF sermon on that kind of stuff. So, can, can we do it? I believe the, that the answer is yes. I haven't heard, I haven't explored it actively. I think I've kind of passive, anecdotally asked, you know, can, can we do this? And I have not heard anybody say, no, you cannot. That, that may come, you know, that answer may come one of these days. But I, I, I think that the, the board is fully within its rights to organize any way it sees fit. So, if there's no further discussion, looking down, down the table, motion is made, motion is seconded. Let's just do a voice. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? So, there's a unanimous approval motion.
Stuck with it for another-
Thank you all. Yes, yes, I, yes, I am. That being the end of the agenda, is there a motion to close?
There is.
Or adjourn, I mean?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.